Thank you, everyone. We appreciate that for that extended break. We're now going to move forward into our last cases for the evening. Case number nine, case number 10, and case number 11, all to do with South Bridge Two. And we have a presentation by Mr. Carr. Mr. Carr?
Yes, thank you Chairman Alessio, and good evening to you members of the Commission. As you mentioned, South Bridge Two. In front of you this evening is three separate cases. I'm going to provide one presentation for all three of those presentations, cases. The site here, as you can see on the context aerial, it's a lengthy site, and it's composed of many different parcels in the heart of our downtown, west of Scottsdale Road generally, north of Indian School, north generally of Third Avenue actually, and it could straddle, it's going to straddle Goldwater Boulevard on the west and east sides, up against the Arizona Canal. A closer sight, look up one of the sites here, you can see again, it's a collection of different parcels here adjacent to Scottsdale Road and Stetson and Sixth Avenue, currently a collection of different retail and entertainment and restaurant uses. Additionally, there's a component that stretches down to Stetson here on the south side, and then further to the west, those, the portion of the project extends along Fifth Avenue here towards Goldwater and continuing on the west side of Goldwater to the currently, this is city-owned property, the Rose Garden, it's commonly called the Rose Garden, it's a parking lot now currently. See, this evening, the applicant has three requests in front of you. Those are rezoning from the current zoning districts within that area previously mentioned, which are C2 predominantly, and as well as a small portion of our downtown retail specialty district. The applicant is requesting to go to three different districts. Those three districts are sub-districts of our primarily downtown zoning, and you can see those sub-districts are the DC, which is downtown core, the DMU, which is downtown mixed-use, and again, the DMU downtown mixed-use for another portion of the site. One of those is type two, the other is type three, and I'll get into that a little bit further in the presentation. Separately, an application has been filed for downtown infill incentive district. The purpose for that application is request for waiver, those fees associated with bonus provisions with our plan block development, and that is permitted pursuant to Section 7 of the downtown infill incentive plan. And finally, the applicant is requesting abandonment of multiple alleys and right-of-way that are throughout the site, as in a way to conglomerate property for the proposed project. This map shows the Old Town future land use map. As you can see here, the property and its location is unique in that it straddles two different types of land use categories within our Old Town area, that being the downtown core shaded in blue on this depiction, as well as the downtown multiple use, which is in, is in green there. A point of note here is that actually the property is bifurcated by both the type one and type, or I'm sorry, the multiple use and the downtown core area as it relates to this parcel here along the Arizona Canal. The current zoning, as I mentioned here, is primarily a mix of C2 along this, most of this area with this portion over here having currently a downtown zoning district of retail specialty type one. The proposed districts include the downtown multiple use type three, as we mentioned, in this area, a combination of the downtown multiple use type three, as well as the downtown core in this area, and a combination of the downtown multiple use type three and the downtown core along this area. The downtown multiple use type two area will be listed here, this is a typo, it should be a type two, not type three. The applicant's overall site plan here, as you can see, a mix of uses for the site, including residential, hotel, office space, of course, some retail, as well as a proposed market. Residential is primarily located on sites D here on the Rose Garden parcel, and site C along the Arizona Canal, with a component of residential within site A, as well as an office and hotel in that area. The market, as is proposed currently, is located on site B. As I mentioned, this parcel is unique in that it has different types of zoning intensity per our downtown plan and our downtown ordinance. Site A is entirely within type three, which is our most intense zoning classification in downtown, as well as type B, a portion of that is within type three, as well as within the type one. That similar condition exists for type C, which again, you can see this yellow line is bifurcating site C, and that what that does is a portion of it is in type three and a portion of it is in type one. All of type two, as you can see here, or I'm sorry, all of site D is within the type two, as you can see here. This graphic also shows here the proposed heights for the project, and those range from a total of 150 feet on a portion of site C, to 66 feet maximum for site D, as well as 150 feet maximum on a portion of site A here, and as well as over here, and then site B is going to be limited entirely to 48 feet at this point. The applicant's site plan for primarily site A and site B, as you can see here, again, a mix of uses, residential on the western portion proposed at this point, a hotel near Scottsdale Road in the southeast corner, and office space and retail located in this north corner of the parcel. Again, the site, site B is proposed primarily as a marketplace with some residential located above that marketplace. Some building sections for that site A, as you can see here. This is a good graphic to show the applicant's proposal for amended development standards as well. This project includes amendments to the step back, and you can see the normal requirement for step back here with this line, and the applicant's proposal here in this green line. Similarly, on the, on this market site here, you can see the proposal for the step back is being met with the current proposal. Some elevations of that proposal on site A, again, you can see that the maximum height being 150 feet for a portion of the site with the residential, I'm sorry, with the residential and the office tower or hotel tower being 150 feet. Moving on to site C, that site is again proposed for primarily residential. Ground floor will retain, however, all the retail space that's currently located on the site. The applicant has proposed to return that, that amount of retail space to the site. So again, on the lower levels of this portion of this site is going to be limited due to that type one zoning to a maximum height of 48 feet. Further back into the site is when the residential towers start to rise adjacent to the Arizona Canal. And those elevations, you can see here, again, as I mentioned, those things that front right onto Fifth Avenue, those properties are again limited to 48 feet, those will be primarily the retail located on the ground floor, and then the residential portion located closer to the Arizona Canal behind that. And you can see how that, that difference in type one and type three is expressed here. This is the elevation, as you will be looking, I guess, towards the north, or this is sort of the southwest, but the similar condition is here on the Arizona Canal, this is basically the Arizona Canal Bank, and you can see that the proposal shows a step back that's basically straight up and down. That point has been a point of contention with staff. We are not in favor of that proposal to amend that development standard. As you can see here on that applicant's graphic, this line in orange is the normal requirement for downtown projects and the step back plane, and the applicant's proposal again is to take that plane generally straight up with a step back towards the top of the building. The Arizona Canal Bank is approximately 50 feet in width in this location. And then moving on finally to site D, again, this is another proposal for residential component for the overall site. There'll be a small retail space at the direct hard corner of Fifth Avenue and Goldwater, but again, generally primarily for residential uses. Some building elevations, and again, the section through the project, you can again see the applicant's requesting amendment to that small amount here. And again, staff is generally supportive of the applicant's amended development standards with the exception of that step back along the Arizona Canal for site C. With this, as I mentioned, there's a number of different abandonments that their applicant is requesting as a result of, to allow for the conglomeration of parcels and overall development of projects within site A, you can see an existing alley that runs through there. Site C, there's some alleyways that run along the backside directly adjacent to the canal, and similar on site D with the Rose Garden, there's a number of different alleys that are located in that quadrant. So real quickly, there's some, some general information about the project. The overall site is just under 10 acres gross, and the applicant's gross floor area ratio allowed is 1.4 with they're providing about 0.95, which is just the commercial space only, that would be retail, hotel, and office space. The building height varies from a maximum up to 100 feet, and that is achieved through bonuses, and the applicant is proposing an overall parking reduction to allow for shared space on site A. Floor areas, just over a total 1.2 million, that does include both residential and commercial space. And finally, the density proposed for the overall project is a little over 57 units per acre, and that is achieved again through a bonus as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and again, the applicant is here to present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Any of the commissioners have any comments or questions? Commissioner Kush and Commissioner Serena?
Let's talk parking. It's hard, I mean, this is a really complicated, huge project. How many, I guess, one question would be parking, how many, because that's the hot topic these days. How many residential units, how many parking places for those residential units, specifically for the residential, not shared or in lieu or any of that stuff?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kush, the applicant's proposal, I believe, is, I can't, is over 500 units, 560 units, I believe, and they are providing all the parking required for residential parking by code, there's no reduction requested.
No, that's not the question, the question, how many residential units?
I believe it's about 560, I don't have the exact.
How many parking places for that many units?
I don't know the exact breakout, I don't have that with me right here.
That's kind of a big, important question, I mean, that's, everything everybody's talked to about downtown, every conversation I get is inadequate parking, so I really need an answer to that before I can even begin to vote on this.
And we have the applicant's team here who could probably provide you some.
All right, they'll address that, okay, good, all right, fine, then, no problem.
Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, on the canal side of the project, so the staff's not in favor of some of the step backs, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
So give me a, just a, I'm trying to get understanding of consistency, and so on the canal side, I'm guessing, well, I can't say, was it 200 feet to the next building across the canal, is that right?
In this particular location, correct.
Okay. There, and off memory, I don't want to relitigate a case, but there was a case that we discussed Marquee that didn't have setbacks like that, and that project had staff approval, if I remember correctly. So I'm just trying to understand, in that area across the street from there, another building can go up within, you know, two lanes of traffic, why is staff recommending or not recommending these step backs with 200 feet across the canal, but they did recommend the bonus provisions to basically make a flat wall, a straight wall at Marquee? What was the difference there?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Serena, I think that there's a couple of different components to the reason why we're not in support of this one, and we may have been in support of the other one. One of this, one of those components is this, this location of this particular project. As you can see here, again, this is on the Arizona Canal, similar projects along there that have been constructed to this point, one, haven't had the height, as this project is proposing right against, adjacent to the hotel, or right adjacent to the bank, the canal bank, and two, if they have had this height, which the only other project that does have this height currently is the waterfront towers, they're set back significantly further from the canal bank than this project is proposing. And so that's, those are two components to the reason why we're having some consternation as to what is being proposed with this application. And additionally, the Marquee building, there are some additional setbacks that were provided, or setbacks on that project near the top that this project, the top of the building that this project is not proposing at this time, and that is, was located generally adjacent to a roadway, which was, has much wider setbacks from other buildings than is currently proposed with this one adjacent to the canal. I'll show another graphic here just real quickly to kind of hopefully demonstrate a little bit of that proximity of this building to the canal bank, as you can see here, you can see that there's a, these two buildings as proposed are right adjacent to that, that right-of-way line that's there. If you get a little bit of proximity of where those are proposed as relation to the canal bank and existing waterfront towers, you can see those are set back a significantly greater distance than these buildings at the same height are proposed. So that's one of the reasons why the staff is having some issues with the proposed amendment.
But I guess my question is, the, the last project, or any project we might see coming forward on this 150 foot and the type three, they're look, I mean, you're talking about a canal, what's, how wide, how wide's the street that Marquee's on? Was it ballpark?
I don't know exactly the specific right-of-way width along Scottsdale Road, see if I can find a graphic here that would give us indication. Generally, our right-of-way along Scottsdale Road.
On Schuman, because that's the site I'm referring to.
Let me try to get back to that spot. I think the overall right-of-way there is, is a generally a right-of-way of, it's down here a little bit, I think, 40 feet, 40, 45 feet is.
Okay, so this is too, I'm just, and here's where my frustration, I think, is, as a commissioner, is we rely on staff for a lot of information, and so when staff comes in as a 40-foot right-of-way outside of 150-foot project, straight up, if you go on the Schuman side of the step backs for the Marquee, they really weren't there, and I'm not here to litigate the Marquee project, I'm just saying, moving forward for us to digest information, and we're looking for consistency, I'm sure the developers in town are looking for consistency, I'm sure the residents want an expectation over what to expect when projects come forward, I'm just having trouble when we have 200 feet of a canal and you're saying he shouldn't have it. I tend to agree that we shouldn't have 150-foot straight wall over most things in town, but that being said, my personal belief of that, we're doing it, so we need to do it in a constructive way, I, I'm just trying to understand why staff's position is that. It's not a hang-up for me, I just wanted to see if there was some clarity on the thought between the two projects, that's all.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Serena, you're right, we're not talking about the Marquee project, but if you recall, the staff, we did have some consternation regarding the amended development standards for Schuman, and perhaps you can recall that we had some different alternative approaches to make both on Scottsdale Road and along Schuman, so every case is, is different, right? But, but similarly, to this case, we had similar concerns with, with the, the Marquee, and, and if you recall, the Development Review Board supported the proposal by the, by the developer and the Planning Commission as well, and then that project went to the City Council last night.
Okay. Another question, the type, on that same site there, and I remember we passed the type three and oversight on my part, and I think probably all of us, why did we slice type one to type three on that property line like that? It would just, I don't, I'm not a developer, it would just seem very difficult to develop a site like that, and it looks like there's, you know, what, 10 feet, 15 feet of type one on his property line, and then it just goes up to type three, it's a tough ask, I think, for someone to accomplish.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioner Serena, you're right, it is a challenging site, and I think the applicant has responded to that challenge pretty well with their design. The idea behind the proposal for the type, or the use of type one and type three here separating the site or on the same site is the idea to share the kind of design character that's to the further south within the greater type one area on the north side of that street to create a similar character along the entire street frontage. And so that does create some challenges when the type three and the type one are adjacent to each other, and again, I think the applicant has addressed that appropriately. That, that challenge is, also requires them to ask for an amended standard where those two things match up, and staff is in support of that, because again, we think that they've addressed it appropriately. We just feel like, again, on the north side where the Arizona Canal is, that, that step back could be a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Chair Alessio, and members of the Commission, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The first is that the issues were much the same, the properties are much the same between the Marquee project and, and this project as well. In regards to 150 feet as it relates to both projects, please keep in mind that 150 feet is not the given in type three. 150 feet is achievable if in the context of the area, it can be done sensitively. And our concern, quite honestly, with both projects was the step-back experience that you would have, whether you're walking down the street or whether you're walking along the canal, is a little intimidating, and, and the remainder of the experience you have along the canal is much different. Now, in, in defense of, of the, the property owner, it's a very tough property, it's narrow, it is bifurcated by a type one to type three, quite honestly, you know, bear my soul here, retrospectively, this is probably a better type two site. But when the downtown plan was changed, we wanted to encourage some innovation and some opportunities that would allow for a little additional height, but when we looked at this, we weren't saying that we guaranteed somebody could achieve 150 feet, it was just an opportunity to demonstrate that you could. So I just wanted to make those things clear, as, as it relates to, to parking, as I calculate it, we have 265 units and 399 residential parking spaces, they're parked at one space per one bedroom and two spaces for two bedrooms and above. And all of those, that residential parking is dedicated parking that's available only to the residential units.
Commissioner Faqih. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Chair, I have just a quick couple of questions for staff. Can you look, go back to the massing exhibit, I'm assuming this is something city staff put together, not the applicant, for the sketch-up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Faqih, you're correct, I think the applicant's elevations are much better than what we presented here, but, and I, and I want to, I guess I probably should have stated that, you know, this is a very generic and basic diagram to.
And you have another one where you're literally next to the canal, okay, this is a little bit scary, so let's talk about this. Is this true as far as dimensioning? So if I'm, is the building first about five to six feet away from the sidewalk, and is it, am I really walking next to a 150-feet building compared to 75 feet on the other side?
So I'm going to go ahead, Mr. Commissioner, I'm going to head back to their elevations here in their section, so you can maybe see that a little bit closer, and you can see the building is right on the property line, and so those sidewalks that you were seeing there are basically right there and right here. The canal bank is 50 feet in width at this location from where this thing rises to its elevation here and over to this point. And again, the building is located, and granted, these portions that are at that part are, are balconies for the building, but the building in general is located right at the property line. Now, maybe one more here, can show that a little bit better, again, here, you can see with that 150 feet, it's right, it's, the elevations for those balconies are right at the property line.
Okay.
You'd have a, you'd have a sidewalk right here generally.
So the first, the first three, four stories are parking, aren't they? Or is it like you have some detailed activities at close to sidewalk?
The way this site exists, Mr. Commissioner, is because there's a great change between the canal bank and Fifth Avenue, these first floors is all, is all retail on the Fifth Avenue side, and on the canal side, it's residential units. So there's residential units that are right at that level, the ground floor level on the canal side.
So for pedestrian walking over there, they're looking at some unit, pedestrian unit there, there is no other activities or any use going on?
Correct.
Okay, the second question I have for you, and if you go back to the parcel map, A, B, C, D, I remember when this project came into, through, I was at DRB when the first initiation, and I asked about parcel D, right? And I see now parcel D, when this project came before, before DRB, I don't think parcel D was part of it. And I asked a question about the parking and the development agreement, and I was quickly shutting down, shut down, I guess, by staff, which is story of my life, but is this, what happened? So what, now we see parcel D, can you give us a little bit of background about this whole development agreement?
I can, I can do that, sure. Chairman and Mr. Commissioner Faqih, originally, you're right, correct site D was not part of the applicant's proposal, per the applicant, per the city's request. At the time, the city wasn't interested in exploring the option of having that parcel within the proposal. Since that time though, which was many months ago at this point, the, the city staff and city leadership has expressed a desire that they, or will allow that to be included with the applicant's proposal moving forward, with the idea that the applicant would purchase that property as part of their project.
Okay, so when you say city, city leadership, you're referring back to the council?
I'm sorry, the city manager and.
Okay, so when it comes to, again, going back to the development agreement, so this development agreement is back in place right now, and can you, what's, what's the agreement, I guess, so whatever parking over there get to be displaced throughout the property, right?
The development agreement at this time, Commissioner Faqih, is still in a negotiation, and is generally a purview of the City Council, but the applicant's proposal on that site is for residential, they're not request, they're not proposing at this point to replace the existing public parking on that site with new public parking.
Okay, so this was my understanding, that they're going to happen where you develop this, there is some parking, you know, to be displaced. Okay, the last question going back to, if you go back to this piece, so the presentation for this case right now, it's a mixed-use project, right? And I, again, even my tone sounds like I'm, I mean, this is a great project, you know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to put holes on it, all what I'm trying to do here to make this project as great as it is, I think this is the best piece we have in Old Town, I think the applicant doing an awesome job, and I think our job here to help to figure out how we can make this the best project that made, and I think we are on the right track, but I mean, the massing is a big part of it, but when I come into mixed-use, so you have A, B, C, D, right? So how did staff combine all of those together as mixed-use? What's the connection, I guess, how did you guys figure out those connections between those four parcels?
Well, the, to answer your question, I guess directly, Commissioner Faqih, is the downtown ordinance in there allows for that, specifically with our plan block development, allows for a conglomeration and encourages, encourages the conglomeration of multiple small parcels within a downtown, and it incentivizes those, that conglomeration by allowing for the additional, additional height and ability to ask for even bonus height when you conglomerate larger pieces. And so that's what the applicant has done here over many years, has, has purchased properties so they can compile those into a larger project that would allow them to qualify for that, for one, but also create a more meaningful project as a whole.
Fair enough, so if I'm looking at this project, those are four different projects then? So this is not one project where A, B, C, D, those are four project, project A, B, C, and D?
I think the applicant can speak better to the, how they, they plan to construct or develop those sites, but they are four distinct sites, but they share an overall development character, I think, that has been presented.
I understand, but as far as the application, for, is this project where it get to be approved for together, or is this project for each one of the parcel, or each one of the proposal, I guess, its own project?
Planning Mission would be recommending tonight, and the City Council would be approving an overall project as a whole, all four, all four pieces as one, one large project.
Okay, so if they're a full project, it's one project, how they're connected? So what's the relation between A, B, C, and D? Is it architecture, is it pedestrian, what's, how those are linked together, this is part that I need to understand.
And there's no specific requirements within our zoning code that says, gives us direction on how those are linked, and generally, some of the items, components you mentioned are the, are how a lot of different products are linked that are on multi-sites that are separated, or that could be separated by rows or other pieces. You might see a common architectural theme or other elements that would bring it all together.
I appreciate that, again, you will notice, I'm just slowing down, so my, my, my question is, if I have 10 property in Scottsdale, I don't put them all in one application, right? So I mean, I have four property here, I'm developing it together, so there is some element connecting those A, B, C, D. So I'm trying to understand, being the civil engineer here, how those are connected? Is, how, how staff sees those four parcel connected?
Chair Alessio, if I might, Commissioner Faqih, as you're aware, the South Canal Bank has already been developed up to the point at which site C starts on the northeast end. So the connection on the street has already been made that extends up to the Marshall Way Bridge, then the new project to the, in parcel A continues on. One thing to note is, this project would probably be much easier to do if you just focused on one component of it. But because things like parking, and because street connectivity and the improvements to Fifth Avenue, and the improvements to the intersection that are required, require that you look at this thing more holistically, they have gone the extra mile and presented this as a complete development plan. It probably will be developed in phases, but the, the connection between them is the continuation of the street theme that's already been established on the canal bank.
And probably this is what I would maybe ask the applicant, I think this is a part that I would like to see, I mean, this is a part that I'm not able to envision on how this connection of the street theme, I guess, which is, how, how does this happen? So this is a part that I need to understand, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Higgs?
No, I think that's a good question, because I'm trying to figure out how it all ties together too, and I, I can't take off my marketing and branding hat, it's, I'm sorry, Carter, it's stuck there. So, you know, is it, is it a very similar look and feel, will I know if I'm at one section, then I'm down at the other section, and they're all kind of connected, so I'm struggling with that part too, and I, and I know it's still so early on that maybe you don't have those answers, but I think that was a very good, good comment and question, so thank you.
And we may hear from the applicant here pretty soon, and they may bring it all together, so any other.
Wait, we let the applicant speak?
Any other comments or questions for staff before we get the opportunity to hear from the applicant?
Question for staff.
Sure.
Yeah, I also think Commissioner Faqih's made a really good point, you're kind of like asking us to swallow the whole apple tonight instead of taking bites out of it. I really understand the relationship to C and D, I walk this canal every week, and C and D really do tie together because of the canal walk, you've got a tunnel that goes under, is that 68th Street or 4th Street?
Goldwater there.
Oh, you have a tunnel that goes. Oh, you have a tunnel that goes under that, and so I see the relationship there. B kind of hangs out by itself, and A really is like a, a project unto itself. Recently, staff put out, or the city put out kind of a character study for, for Old Town, and it's really a ni, nice book. Does this project more, as designed, more or less fit those guidelines?
Mr. Chairman-
Other than just, I know the setback thing is really something, the step-back thing, but, but architecturally and everything else, does it kind of fit that character study?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kusch, I think the applicant's team has done a good job of working towards a project that it was, it could be a good example for us to show people that, of how you comply with the downtown, you know, outside of the exceptions that we're noting. And so I think that it's something that's positive for the downtown, and I think that it meets a lot of the, the goals and the policies that the Old Town Plan is promoting.
Very good. Any other comments for staff before we hear from the applicant? Very good, thank you, Mr. Carr.
Thank you.
And now we're going to hear from the applicant. I'm surprised she's been as patient as she has during all of these questions. You've been wanting to get up there, it's your turn.
Chair and Vice Chair members of the commission, for your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group, and I actually office right there at South Bridge. I am here tonight with, and I'm honored to be here tonight, really, with Carter Unger and his team, Jose and Randy. We also have Don Cardier from CivTech to answer any further parking or traffic questions, and then one of our engineering team members from Hilgar Wilson, Mark Ibsen, and Michael Markou, the planner and architect from Allen &amp; Phelps. So we have a lot of answers. I just wanted to preface the whole discussion with, we appreciate what staff has done. This project, and I know all of you have had lots of discussions over the years, started 25 years ago with a vision of Fred Unger, and has continued, and this is the near culmination of that. He spent that long of time and his family's continuing to assemble those parcels, to develop it in a master plan, so that downtown Scottsdale is coordinated, and it does theme together with where I office, where he originated, and, at the project in South Bridge. And we'll explain a little bit more of that in, in a second. I did want to make it clear that we agree with all of staff stipulations tonight, but for, if, when you take a motion, if you take a motion tonight, we'd ask that you delete stipulation number eight, which is the step-back stipulation on parcel C, and I'll ask the architect in a second to come up here and explain why. Aside from that, we're still discussing drainage and sewer stipulations with the staff, but we feel we'll, we'll be in a good place for that. So tonight, we're in agreement. Item number two, the IID, we have agreed with staff that we ask that you pass that along to council, and then they will make consideration, because it's really a policy issue on waivers of fees, and frankly, we're talking with staff now about some modifications to that. So with that, I'd ask, I wanted to make one other comment. On parcel D, I think one of the commissioners asked about why you didn't see that at DRB, and, and you didn't see that at DRB, because they aren't asking for any amendments to the development standards on that parcel. So the DRB case, which actually supported the deletion of this stipulation number eight, so it, it approved something without step-backs on the canal, the DRB did. We'd like to go back to that tonight. So with that, I'd like to ask Michael to come up and, and talk about that. Thank you.
Before you go, you said that there was four stipulations that you were wanting to delete?
Uh, no, one stipulation, number eight. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Okay, very good.
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. And then just one other real quick clarification, I just want to make sure, because we did have a question, that your, that the applicant's presentation is for all three of the cases that are on the agenda tonight? We're not doing individual presentations, we're doing one present.
Chair and Vice Chair, yes, as your normal practice, we're consolidating for sake of time, and really, conversation, I think, is, is more efficient, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for-
Thank you for your time. My name is Michael Markou, I'm the architect on the project, and I'm with Allen Phelps. Can we go back to the master plan that was in the original staff presentation? Because I wanted to work backwards. I wanted to address your first comment or question about the overall connectivity of all four sites. One of the things that, as an architect, we like to do, and personally, I'm very involved in, is making sure that urban context is something that is walkable, it is for, for the, the community and to utilize. And one of the things that we were very excited to deal with on this site was Carter's willingness to look at the project as a whole. A number of developers we've worked with have always looked at their properties as a singular element. This project offered an opportunity to look at city building, and as you mentioned, the, there's an obvious connection between sites D and C in terms of the connectivity along the canal. But one of the things that we really wanted to address, and that we worked with the city on, is making sure that we're continuing the activity, the pedestrian activity that occurs from the mall, that's working its way down the waterfront project, and typically, in this condition, people get to the bridge at South Bridge, and the pedestrian action just sort of stops. People kind of get to that, to the existing South Bridge project, which we were very happy to work with, and that we developed with Carter's dad. And they, those pedestrians kind of get lost, and they lose the, the energy that's happening with the connectivity that's currently going on. This project, we specifically looked at what happens when a guest, or as a tourist, or somebody that's visiting, comes to our city, comes across that bridge, and what happens after that. We've specifically set up different events. One at B, which is a community space directly north of the, the market, that you can see directly from that, that decision point. Second one is at C, where we've chipped away a bit of the site to add in the, to relocate the Horse Fountain, to create yet another urban node. And we've set up a series of events that are all nodal, that bring people through the city, and to inspire more connectivity to move from the north through our project, to even continue down south to the arts area. So our goal on the bigger scale is actually to integrate this into the city and utilize exterior spaces, not just the interior, to promote flexibility, to promote the community feel. And we're using all of our development on the first floor, will all be wraparound retail that will further inspire that movement through the space. Additionally, on site B, we've added, the conception, concept that Carter came up with was, we have a high bay first floor, that the entire exterior of the building opens up, so it becomes a winter garden retail space. And adjacent to that, we've added a, a road that goes north-south that connects Fifth Avenue to Sixth Avenue, that allow, further promotes that, that pedestrian connectivity to the south. All of these structures all work together, really create a vibrant community. From, and I hope that addresses, at least from an urban standpoint, urban design standpoint, why we wanted to promote the project as, as a whole project, as opposed to a series of individual pieces. Can we go to my presentation? The second point I wanted to address was the concern over stipulation eight. As, as was mentioned, during the char, character plan analysis, there was a decision to make, to bifurcate the site with, we currently have a roughly, it's a 140-foot wide property, and we have, basically, they put the type-one, type, type-three boundary at about 90, 95 feet into the property. What that does is it, it sort of favors the development towards the canal. We understood that the, the reasoning behind this was to make sure that the scale of the structure along Fifth Avenue was a lower scale that feathered into the rest of the community, which I think that is an apt approach. But what that does do, when you've applied a type-three overlay to a very narrow site, is it does kind of tie our hands in terms of what we can do and where the development We have taken steps to make sure, one of the things, I, I don't want to disparage anyone's sketch-up ability, but we were a bit taken back by the model that was shown. It shows a continuous mass that goes up the face right at the, at the property line. That's actually not how, what's going to happen. We do have setbacks in, in terms of the structure, that's all balcony area, that will add some depth. We're actually creating hanging garden, so we've got a lot of flexibility, or a lot of transitional spaces in that elevation. Though, we've continued the same theme on the north-west side of the building, that we're doing on the, the southeast side of the building, in that we've got a, a strong base, and then that transition to a much lighter glass structure above that more traditional-shaped base. And then there is activity, we've got a number of different community spaces. One of them occurs on the first, with, basically, it's the second floor, first floor off of the canal. That would be a, a major, that's where the gym and the community space is, roughly. On the north corner, that is right between where the existing South Bridge is in our structure, looking out over the canal. As we go down to the south, on the fourth floor, we have, it was where the community area and the pool is, looking out with amazing view over Camelback, but it also helps with the step-back. Where we are stepping back is that gateway down Goldwater. So we're pulling the structure back away from the Goldwater Boulevard, and then, can we go to the next slide? Whoops, sorry, I can do that.
I'm not sure exactly how much more you might have, but our, our time did expire. I don't know if we are wrapping up, or if we need a little extra-
Chair and Vice Chair, if I may ask, I think we had a conversation earlier about the three cases together would cause more time, but also, I think he spent a great deal of his time just answering a question that he might have not had in his presentation originally, so I hope we, because Carter does want to, to talk too, so.
Sure. Approximately, how much more time do you think, I mean, just generally?
Oh, I can wrap it up real quick.
Great, and then we'll obviously, we'll hear from Carter.
It's late, and we should definitely get a little-
(laughing)
As you can see through the section above, where we've been, the blue line in the middle is where that type-one, type-three boundary has been made, which kind of forces the building to the canal. The wedge that's taken out of that project from both setbacks, from the type-one and to the type-three setback, create effectively a fairly pointy building, which the top, basically, six floors become unbuildable, so that becomes a very challenge to the project. And then the one thing I wanted to point out, that's a very important aspect of this project, is Spring Creek is, has committed to improving all of the canal area, which, when you look at the overall section, we have a 200-foot setback from the building, the structures adjacent on the other side of the canal. They have committed to doing the landscape improvements to the 65 feet that is between our building and the canal itself, so that inherently creates that setback that we're looking at. That starts to create a very vibrant space, and as an example, a number of the projects that we've been looking at that inspire this project have all been similar widths between building faces, similar heights in terms of what the building faces are that adjacent those public amenities. And every one of these projects are ones that started out with an underappreciated urban space, that over the years have developed into very world-class urban spaces. So none of them have been affected adversely by the density that's surrounded them.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. I believe we do have one additional speaker, we'll go ahead and-
Yes. I'd like to introduce the visionary, really, Carter Unger, if you might come up and, and talk a little bit and address him.
All right.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I will speak quickly, because I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions for me to answer, and I also want to allow everybody to come up and give their public comment. Thank you very much to the staff, specifically Brad Carr and all the work he's done with us. Thank you, commissioners, for putting your own private time into caring and shaping what this city looks like, and most importantly, to the citizens who came out, for or against. The against are just as important as the for, and what we're trying to do in this vision of connectivity is take care of the community, take care of the citizens around us, and create a vibrant downtown that allows retailers to stay alive and active in the summertime. We start from a very lowers, much lower scale on site D, and if possibly, we could pull up that big one real quick, and I swear this will be fast, because I know you're going to have questions. Just the over main thing of the building, of all the buildings, all four sites. So we start with site D, which is close to the only single-family residences in the area. We are not requesting any additional height, in fact, we refuse to, and I'll pass on the site if we can keep it that way. We need to take care of them, we need to keep it more quiet, more for-sale residential connection with the community. We have a little bit of retail on the corner, 3,000 square feet, this is more like community amenity, a nice little restaurant, cafe. And then we build as we move towards the more urban environment. We cross the street, and now we have ground-level retail, we have a little more activity, but still, it's in keeping with the Fifth Avenue boutique shops, local, you know, if you're in Arizona, you got to go to Fifth Avenue, it's the only place to find X, Y, and Z. So now we're getting a little more activity going. We also have the residential units above, that, yes, do go high. I, again, sketch-up was great, but kind of scared me, the big cement wall. I would be upset if I saw that too, trust me. And then as we move further to the east, we get into more of the, even more alive, both in height, density, and activity level. We have our hotels, we can bring in world-class business conferences and travelers who are going to stay in a luxury full-service hotel. We have the Class A office that is so vital to reinvigorate this area and provide bodies full-time that are of the highest caliber office. These are small floor plates. This is not big box call center. This is the type of offices that South Bridge is, where you have architecture firms, law firms, so on and so forth, and can afford to eat, buy art, do things in the community. And site B is where we see a great community, oh, and residential there as well, of the rental nature. So it's a little bit more of the transient, surrounded by ground-level retail all around, great restaurant concepts. Site B, Scottsdale's been begging for a downtown urban grocer, local food hall-type concept, and we're excited to do that, and to connect it all together. This will be one of those things where you feel like you're in that village. A lot of projects talk about live, work, play, this truly is all of it, and that's why it's encompassing, so we can put that office in one area, closer to Scottsdale Road, not next to the residence of Villa Dea, stay north of the canal. And then, you know, it all works together, it's all going to be connected architecturally, but while separated and indifferent, so you feel like you're moving along. This incorporates the Emerald Necklace Plan that was set up years ago by Holly Street Studios, while we're bringing people down and hopefully pushing them down into the arts district and helping everybody, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Unger, I appreciate the effort. Any questions for the applicant before we open public testimony?
Sure, everyone question?
Commissioner Bullinger.
It's for the architect, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Mike Markou. Mike, Mr. Markou. I, I'm struggling a little bit with the trade-off of, of the step-back. On one, on the, the street side, it seems like you're staying under it and below, and maybe staff can help out here. And on the canal side, we're pushing up and, and going more vertical and encroaching in what would be the step-back, the required step-back. So is, I guess what I'm trying to get is, I see a give and take, is there more, is there a balance, or is it all take?
Well, what, I guess the hard way to put it, originally, when we first approached the project, is we thought feathering to the south and stepping the building from north to south made more sense. And what we did was we actually S-curved the building that allowed for more open space from both sides of the project.
I see that.
What happened was, is when we started to look further into how the character plan overlay happened, what that did was, it pushed any development that we possibly do to balance what was happening on the canal side, to push that to the-
I understand, I'm, I'm, I guess the, the code part of it, where there is definitely an encroachment and a step-back requirement. That's on the canal side, but on the street side, it looks like you're not exceeding, or you're actually under that-
Correct.
...requirement.
We are, we're meeting the setbacks.
Are you under it?
Uh, just, yes.
Just under, okay, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to see if there's a trade-off from front to back, if it's, if it's a, more of a give and a take, or is it all just maxed out, plus the take, I guess is the question.
And Chair and Commissioner Bullinger, I might just address it a little bit, is, I don't know if it's, if it's totally understood that when you're walking as a pedestrian down that canal, what you're seeing there is not a plane, it's a, it's a guy's patio with, you know, so the, so the idea of, of being smack, it's just not the case, you're not smack up against anything. You've got a lot of light and, you know, shadowing, and what you're trying to avoid, right, with a, a, a step-back, what you're trying to achieve is, is that the light and the planes and the shadows aren't all just, you know, vertical, and I think that they've achieved that with your-
Yeah, and my question was more to help understand if there was a give and take- My question was more to help understand if there was a give and take, that's all. I mean, the architectural experience on the canal side with everything that you presented, and I understand it clearly, it's, there are urban environments that work really well with that vertical surface, however it's constructed. It'll work with the retail wrapped around it. My question was more code-related, is it, are we completely out of space, out of step-back space, or is there some other place we can say, well, they gave a lot here, and then so taking that piece of it would be a trade-off?
We did try to honor exactly what the staff was trying to do with their overlay, to make sure that we weren't putting development rate on the Fifth Avenue side. So, ultimately, that's what we kind of, if we were going to amend a setback, we felt we should do it all in one area, as opposed to kind of pushing it all over the property.
I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Faqih.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a quick question for the architect. Going back, sorry, I mean, going back, actually, you know, I was going to bring this question to Mr. Bullinger, Commissioner Bullinger's point here. When I look at Parcel D and Parcel C, in Parcel D, you had the pool along the canal, and then you kind of like shift, which is similar size or width on property, and you shift, you know, I'm looking at your section, and the building went, we had the pool deck, your garages, and the building seems stepped back a little bit from the canal, which, I mean, looks good. You go to Parcel C, and, you know, it seems like, as Commissioner Bullinger mentioned, you're meeting on Fifth Avenue, you're coming into your, I mean, you're meeting the requirement, but you're encroaching this canal, which seems like this could be pushed more, I mean, maybe if, if the massing along the canal, which is one of the best pieces we have right now in Old Town, like the waterfront, that this building could move to the south side, similar to what you've done in D, and maybe ask for the, to relieve from the requirement along Fifth Avenue instead of the canal, I guess. I mean, I don't know if something you guys look at, or if it does affect your project or not.
We did look at it, and there were certainly different constraints on both sites. One, the D site, which, if you look at exactly that S-curve, is mirrored sort of what we were originally looking at doing with the original design. The type-eight, or the type-one, type-three districting right through the area does push us to kind of move all of that density to the one side. We then have additional constraints over the parking garage down below. That structure runs all the way through, and that kind of sets the standard for where, you know, we basically have a one-third of the base band that we can cantilever, that starts to get challenged in terms of pushing structure around on the site, because we have a very strict comm line that's driven by the parking below.
But you can do, I mean, it's going to be similar situation structurally to what you're doing in the other building. You're just taking your garage now from the eastern, southeastern portion of it instead of along the canal, though. I don't know, staff seems want to...
Chair Lysio, Commissioner Faqih, staff held pretty strongly to the Fifth Avenue side should remain at the scale that it is now. So, we, we did pressure them to, to say, we can go about halfway back into that lot. The front half, fronting on Fifth Avenue needs to remain that pedestrian scale. The back half on the canal could, could be the greater height.
So, what, you guys, you don't think the back half on the canal is as important as Fifth, or maybe more, with all the activities you have, with all the restaurant and retail and whatnot?
Well, actually, what, what we've heard from the community is that the type-one area is, is pretty sacred in terms of, of the, the height and feel that it has, and Fifth Avenue has such a history of being a pedestrian scale, that, that, quite honestly, we felt that was a more important trade-off than the, than the back part of the property.
So, other than the community, I guess, from planning stuff, you get, planning standpoint, you think that connection on Fifth Avenue is, is better than having it along the canal. So, let's say we want to do the vertical adjustment here, and we're fine to have a vertical without a step, a step-back. Staff seems like, like it more to be on Fifth Avenue than being on the canal. Is this what...
No. We, Commissioner Faqih, no, we, we think that the Fifth Avenue side is where the diminished height should be. If height is appropriate, it's along the canal, we disagree that on the way the step-back occurs on the canal, but we think that's the appropriate place for the height.
Okay. Thank you. One, one couple of things for architect. When I look into the, the architecture floor plan based on D4 and CTM, I see all of those balconies. Are those balconies outside of the property line?
No.
And this is just based on the plan I have here. I see encroaching outside of the property line. Is this the case, or...
No, everything that we have within the balcony should be within the property lines.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at this Exhibit D4 and showing encroachment beyond the property line when it comes to the building envelope, so I wasn't sure if this is on the roof plan, I guess. I wasn't sure if this is the case or not.
Our intent is to build anything that, the only thing that we would encroach over the property line would be shade canopies on the pedestrian side. Beyond that, everything is within the property lines.
Okay. And last question about building D, as far as elevation, my understanding, you have at least 10 to 12 feet difference in elevation between the canal and Building D, correct?
At Building D, it's only eight.
Eight feet?
Yes.
And what's the difference between the canal and Building C?
It starts, it starts to ramp up. It, it's between nine and nine and a half.
Okay. So, when I look at your section at Building D, you're adding two parking, right? And two parking structure?
So, what is happening on, yes, on...
And then, you have the pool on top of it?
Correct.
But it seems like from the canal point, you're building up another 12 feet along the canal, just to build the garage, right? So, based on the section, there seems like there is about eight to 12 feet along the canal with garages, and then you build your pool.
So, we do have one below grade in this particular area, and then the difference between what we'd need for the parking and the pool deck, that additional area that is above the, effectively above the canal, is the depth of the pool that we need for, for clearances.
Okay. So, you're talking about seven feet?
Typically, those are, those structures are about five.
Okay. So, you're, you're raised five feet, I guess, from along the canal, right?
Yeah.
So, if someone walking there, they're not seeing anything, is there going to be seeing the parking wall? Is this true?
No. Well, it would be a decorative wall, because effectively, it's above you, at certain parts of the site, you'll have residential balconies looking out over the canal. On the area where the pool is, you've got the pool area, which is, we're looking at being landscape planters and a staircase that connects down to the canal.
Okay. But then, some areas going to be just decorative fancy wall?
Yes. There'll be an articulated wall.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Faqih. Any other comments or questions before we open up public testimony? Nope, good. Thank you. Then we'll start with public testimony. We'll start with Mr. David Ortega. Mr. Ortega is, so while we are hearing the cases as one, and most people are commenting as one, Mr. Ortega would like to speak individually on each one of the cases. So, Mr. Ortega, I think we'll start off with item number nine, and then we'll move to number 10.
Thank you.
Move to number 11, and then we'll have two minutes on each one of those items.
Thank you. I will speak for four minutes, and then reserve my final two minutes after others.
Very good.
The case that you see today, I'm not representing any particular landholder or anybody, any particular individual. But the case you see, we will have many people say they want the Rose Garden project because it's not condos. And so, we expect that, and we can agree with that premise. One of the things that's happening tonight is they don't want apartments. However, what's changed over the last 10 or 12 years is, there's no, that as a condo, it might become an Airbnb. You may have a result of that by having a condo provided, and I do not see any stipulation with reference to this. So, although many speakers will say they'd rather have this than apartments, I can agree with that, but you're leaving yourself wide open on the other situation, because this is city property. So, the city itself could stipulate as a transfer of the deed, and that's not something that can be discussed or stipulated. It's not currently in the, in the discussion for today. The other great concern is, people on Fifth Avenue are losing 126 parking spaces presently called the Rose Garden. So, what's missing on your fact sheet of key details is, all the businesses along Fifth Avenue are losing that. Originally, they, cities signed an agreement that they would replace the parking. However, over the years, that was taken away. So, the big takeaway here is that 124 spaces are being taken away. Now, by bundling Rose Garden with the rest of the deal, that is opening up the renegotiation of that fact. The people that have properties, then customers, and the people that even park on the nor, on the South Bank already, are using that. But now, it's all going to be personal property, and it would be eliminated. What I'm going to show you is this, in the overhead, they are showing, the question was, how consistent is it with a walkable city? If you could see, this is Building C, what they are proposing is encroaching into Fifth Avenue. They're going beyond the property line and going 12 feet over. Now, we are required normally to have a covered canopy. That's a shade element. But they're actually proposing to put people's, people's bedrooms or living rooms and their, their patios over public property. That's never been done before. I've, I've been here 40 years. I, I see no reason for that. And placing that before you is really very irregular. The other problem with that is that the road itself, Fifth Avenue, is only about as wide as from me to the chair, where the drive is. So, basically, the cars were parked right underneath the, the edge of the building as they're encroaching 12 feet. It's never been done before. Why do that? They're already asking for 66 feet above the area. The other problem is, any fireman will tell you that if you've got to put a fire, and you've got a ladder truck, and you're trying to, to reach floors four, five, and six, you can't do that, because they're going up 35 feet, 35 feet. After encroaching, they're going up vertically, which, again, is uncalled for. And on that basis alone, this project should go back to the drawing board, is not proper, it's something that cannot be stipulated, and it's very irregular. The other thing I'll say is, the reason why it's encroaching on the canal is because they're asking you to give them the alleyway. You don't have to. You don't have to. You could set them back 16 or 18 feet. They're asking tonight for a free alley. And even if they paid for it, that's encroaching into, the reason they can't build closer to the canal, it's federal property. It's, they're not doing you a favor by saying that. It's literally favor... And finally, on again, the key elements, they're stating that the, the amenity along the canal, it's item number 11 on your bullet, may not be available anymore. In other words, by giving them the alley, they're telling you upfront, or the staff is telling you, you may lose the convergence or other amenity areas that you have. So, that's listed, and that's, I believe, I've gone over a little bit, but I think I have one minute left. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Do I understand you're trying to reserve that time to speak in the future?
Yeah. Because there may be some other discussion.
So, you're, you're wanting to take that card and then speak in the future?
Well, I, no, I, I have six minutes, but if you want, I can conclude when I, I want to answer a question, if someone asks a question.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Ortega?
Staff, I mean, is this true? I mean, are these comments correct? I guess...
My question would be of staff, his comments he's made about overhangs over into the street and, and accessibility by the fire department. Is that accurate?
Chair Lysio, Commissioner Kush, obviously, at this stage, the, the concept's a little, it is the concept. The details of how things can overhang into the right-of-way, those will be flushed out a little more at the DR stage, but generally speaking, we do allow overhangs for shade canopies into our right-of-way, provided they meet all the requirements for access, and the applicant agrees to purchase that area for...
And I'm pretty familiar with the fire department. They're never going to let you get away with too much. So, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I, I will wrap up my last two minutes, and...
Please.
This case, again, there's so many specifics, and it's so complex, that it needs to be continued and should not be voted upon right now. For instance, just 16 days ago, they posted, this was August 6th, a request for a $2 million waiver and an extra 66 feet. Now, that came before, before, the application was made on the 6th, just 16 days ago. They're, they're asking for that without you're, giving you a chance for due deliberation, and obviously, they're asking for all those setback concessions. And then, the, the staff is telling you that they, they oppose that, that they don't want that. So, I would highly recommend that these be voted on separately. You, you will be remiss if you don't vote on the abandonment separately, because, again, that, that deals, or, or continuing that discussion until the setbacks are properly done. There's, there will be an uprising of, of the local merchants, because they're losing public parking spaces. Right now, there's over 560 new residential units, and there's 1,500 parking spaces. So, there's only 1,000 for the hotel and all the offices and everything else. And the public good is losing 125 spaces at the Rose Garden. So, that is negotiable. I believe that the public should not lose that, and I don't believe that we should be giving them property which crowds the amenity that makes Scottsdale special. So, that would hurt the activities between there and Goldwater, and if you've been to the convergence or anything else that has been presented at the holiday time, you just don't want it to say, well, they've got a balcony there, and you've got to stop your amenity here, because right now, it is used by the public, and it should be kept wide open.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Our next speaker is Lorraine Rogers. Ms. Rogers, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes. My name is Lorraine Rogers. I live at 19700 North 76th Street in 85255. I have lived in Scottsdale since 1975, and I've lived in four zip codes, all within the city of Scottsdale. I'm speaking in support of Southbridge, too. I'm a resident, a very happy resident, and someone who remembers when the canal banks were just dirt, and basically, they had issues. There were many issues with them. They certainly weren't in amenity for the city, but we need canals. I appreciate canals, and it was very important to have those canals there. I really was struck when someone named Fred Unger, who I didn't meet until a few years after this was all implemented in Southbridge, he absolutely transformed that whole area of downtown, Old Town now, and he actually took it from a utility area that was not 100 percent. It was a corridor. It was a utility corridor. So, he took that, and he transformed it into a beautiful urban amenity that people love. They come here for, I know, I love it. I loved it then, no matter what zip code I lived in, and I love it now, as do many visitors and so on. Fred passed before. He was able to see his vision for continuation of, of that wonderful amenity, absolutely, you know, going to people and, and move forward. I saw his grandson's building blocks of what it looked like, and I was blown away by that as well as the high-tech rendering. Carter has moved in, stepped up, and he's taken his father's vision to a new level. I am personally extremely impressed and delighted for my city, and I thank all of you who have participated in getting this this far, and I'd like to see it, if you don't mind, I'm not 20 anymore, I would very much like to see this while I'm still here, and I want to see it fully gone, so my great-grandchildren can really enjoy it. I highly recommend that you support this wonderful, absolutely fabulous planning commission item, and let's get it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Our next speaker is Jaclyn Hall. And after that, we'll have Dana Close. Ms. Hall, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Jaclyn Hall, 6929 East Lafayette Boulevard and 6945 East Lafayette Boulevard. Boulevard. Both of my addresses are directly opposite, um, Project D, or Zone D as they're going to call it. When they first approached us, I was not a fan of having anything go up in that area as I have just done a major remodel and part of that remodel, um, had me increasing my door height up to eight feet and ten feet so I could have the view that is there. After further discussion and in listening to what they plan to do, the vision that they have, I will say that I am in favor of it. I walk by the Rose Garden parking lot every single day with my dogs at all different hours and while I can appreciate that we will be losing parking spots, I never see anybody park there. In my opinion, it's just a matter of time before somebody builds something in that spot and I'd rather have it something that is done tastefully and something that will keep the comps up in our area as well. So I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dana Close?
Dana's not here, that's the car I just called, she's not here.
Okay, very good. She was here, I don't see her. Then we'll move on to Sony Kertley. And you'll be followed by Andrea Alley. If you could state your name and address?
I'm pretty sure Dana went to the meeting we were all supposed to be at at seven o'clock tonight.
Oh.
My name is Sony Kertley. I'm a fifty-year resident, actually more than fifty years now, so along with Lorraine, we've seen a lot of changes along that Dust Bowl that was the canal. In fact, when David Ortega was talking about doing gondolas, there goes my time. Uh, I'm also on the Board of Directors for COGS. I wanna thank the Unger team. They have done an incredible job over the years of keeping the community updated on the project. It has tweaked, it has changed, it has improved all along the way, and that gave us an opportunity to keep our COGS newsletter community updated. So they did a great job as a developer, letting us know what was happening. This is exciting. This has such vibrancy, uh, and it's an enormously ambitious project, as you see, all the way from the north section down to D, the Rose Garden. Uh, it's so needed. It's a tired area, the Fifth Avenue, this Stetson area, we've got to vital- revitalize it. If the Spring Creek team does even half of what they did for us on the first phase on that side of the canal with Fred involved, it's gonna be a win-win for the residents to be using it. The public hospitality core zone is outstanding. We're looking at twelve months' use possible in that area for public events. What more could we ask for? Well, more tours. We'll get 'em if this is completed, so please support it, we sure do.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Andrea Alley. That'll be followed by Sandy Schenkott. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Chair Alessio and Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Andrea Alley and I live at sixty-eight twenty-eight East Almeria Road. The first thing Carter said to me when I met him was, if you, if I am taking more away than I give back, then I'm doing it wrong. And that definitely got my attention. I want nothing more than for our city to grow in ways that we can be proud of and in ways that serve our residents both current and future. This is a big project, no doubt, one with a lot of moving parts and a lot of time that will be invested into building it. There's no question that it will dramatically alter Old Chal- Old Town forever. This project is an opportunity to create a true live-work-play environment for the people who call Scottsdale home. A combination of for-sale and rental units with Class A office space and hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail and restaurant use is an excellent way to grow our urban core. Open space and underground public parking can be maximized in partnership with the city, helping address many community concerns regarding forthcoming projects in Old Town. Like many people, I run the Arizona Canal along the waterfront often. I even remember when the waterfront towers were being built, although I can't remember what was there before. While often contentious, our city has done a great job creating a place at the waterfront for people to gather for events and enjoy everything our downtown has to offer. This project will further activate and enhance the area, making use of many empty deserted lots, abandoned alleys, despite, despite the big change it will bring. The land use is appropriate to the goals of the downtown plan and will ultimately boost both our quality of life and our economy to the tune of millions of dollars per year. Our downtown will continue to grow and change and my hope is to see this land put to its best use. There are always challenges with proposals of this intensity, but the applicant has worked hard to address those challenges, not only with the city but with the community, which is one of the many reasons that I support this project. These buildings and their uses will all outlive us. Someday, our kids will look back and say, I remember when this was being built, but I don't remember what was here before it. Like many, I'm a sucker for nostalgia, but I also realize that change is inevitable. Because of this, I ask you for the best possible change. After all, if not Spring Creek, someone will build here. South Bridge Two sets the highest standard that Scottsdale deserves. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alley. Our next speaker is Sandy Schenkott, followed by Pete Palmer.
Good evening, Chair Alessio and Commissioners, it's been a long night and, um, I'll make this short. Um, I lived in Palm Beach County, Florida for thirty years and I worked in new home sales and management. During that time, I saw a great deal of development and redevelopment down there. When I first met Fred Unger in twenty thirteen at a tourism advisory task force meeting, I discussed with him the revitalization of Boca Raton. Meisner Park, a mixed-use development, replaced an old city mall. It gave new life to the old part of town that became very active with retail, office space, restaurants, apartments, and an amphitheater. I told Fred that I thought Meisner Park would be a good blueprint for what he was intending to do with downtown Scottsdale, nearest canal redevelopment, South Bridge. Boca Raton has a similar demographic and population size to Scottsdale. For several years, I worked with Fred and a few other downtown people to try to help determine how we could improve Scottsdale in so many respects. In November of twenty seventeen, just two months before Fred passed away, Fred invited a few of us to see his logo land project of the redevelopment of Stetson Fifth and now called South Bridge Two. He was very proud of his vision and the concepts. You are being asked by his son, Carter, to approve this incredible plan to revitalize this area. Fred dedicated his life to the vision of Scottsdale. He gave of his time and talents to many organizations and to the city. He truly was Mr. Switzerland. For years, he had acquired many properties and had been a good landlord to these businesses. Now is the time to take the total package of South Bridge Two project and improve it. It is not infill. It is probably the largest redevelopment effort that Scottsdale will ever see. Consider all the work and the years of toil put into this project. I didn't know I was twenty-five. Spring Creek is a solid development company which has been dedicated to the betterment of this city for years. In your packet, you have the history of this developer. You have the impressive drawings and detail. You need to make this decision to move Scottsdale forward into a new era with a unique and classy Old Town. Every aspect of this one million, two-hundred-thousand-square-foot project is detailed. Upgrading almost ten acres in Old Town will put Scottsdale back on the map as a forward-thinking city. I encourage all of you to vote in favor of this dynamic redevelopment. Do Fred Unger's legacy proud and honor his great vision for our city with a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schenkott. Um, next speaker is Pete Palmer, followed by John Little.
Chairman Commissioners, Pete Palmer, I'm, uh, seventy-one eighty-one East Camelback Road. I live at, uh, the waterfront condos, so we'll be facing those, the gray walls as a size that, that was scary. Uh, but we, we know better. The, uh, I just wanna compliment, uh, the Unger group for Carter when, I, I'm also the, uh, chair for the board for the neighborhood, although I'm speaking personally here because I can't speak for the entire board, that Carter's came and briefed all the residents that were interested, had linked, great discussion, got our feedback, and, and has been in a positive dialogue, uh, so that it will meet all our expectations. And, uh, being very familiar with all the character plans, city plans, and everything else, because I've actually read them all, a- as well as the updates, uh, I can say that, at least from my personal perspective, they're trying to live up to the vision that we enti- we're trying to do in, uh, Old Town Scottsdale. And we're really looking forward to getting that whole area developed because I know when I moved in here ten years ago, it was, we're gonna develop this whole area and it's gonna be like, uh, this great place and it's ten years and we're still waiting. Uh, so I'd encourage and support the development and get it going, and I know there's a lot more in the processes that has to go on, but get it approved now so we can get it moving so we're wait, not waiting another ten years to cause this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Next speaker is John Little, followed by Chuck Vivian. Mr. Little, if you could state your name and address?
Yes, and John Little, uh, one three nine five two East Geronimo Road. Uh, worked and lived in Scottsdale for thirty-five years. Um, the only thing more rare than perhaps a city manager, former city manager standing up at this podium is a former council member standing up at this podium. In fact, most former city managers ride off into the sunset. Uh, in fact, if you look closely at that picture, you can see maybe four or five of them heading out. Um, this project has caused me to come back downtown today. Um, I had the honor of also working, as so many of you, uh, people here tonight have mentioned, working with, with Fred Unger. I was the director of downtown, uh, development, uh, for five years. I officed on Craftsman's Court. I know every shop, every dumpster, every back alley, every square inch of downtown. I know this area, I know Fifth Avenue especially well. And what I'm most impressed with is this project, and you've read the material, you've seen it, I've seen it, we've all read it, but if there's a poster child for best practices of urban design and walkability, um, this is it, and we shouldn't miss this opportunity to approve this project. It's an extraordinary project, it's a, it's a great opportunity. And, um, one thing I'd just like to mention at the very end here is that when I first came downtown and worked among the merchants and the property owners, cooperation didn't exist, uh, self-interest existed. It was governed by self-interest. Individual property owners or merchants or districts. This project is bringing people together, not out of self-interest, but out of community interest, and it's something we need very badly in this community today, and I thank the Unger family. No success comes without risk and no risk comes without sacrifice. And if you know the Unger family like I do, you know that there's been plenty of both. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Um, next speaker is Chuck Vivian. And after Mr. Vivian, we have Carly Vivian.
Okay, my name is Chuck Vivian, I'm at six nine five three on Lafayette Avenue. And, um, thanks for the opportunity to talk and to, uh, voice my support for this project. Uh, we moved here from, uh, from Rancho Santa Fe, California fifteen years ago. We moved to a beautiful six thousand square foot home backing up to the Trune Golf Course. And why would I leave that to move to downtown Scottsdale? Uh, because it's gonna be great. It's, it's great now, it's gonna get even better, and I didn't know Fred Unger, but I know that guy. I know Carter. We've had coffee at my home, we've had conversations on the phone. Anytime I've had a question, he picks up the phone and he answers the question. I know medical devices inside out. I know nothing about construction and pulling together projects, and this guy, uh, has given the time and the effort to my neighborhood, uh, to make sure that we're up to date on everything, and that means a lot to me. Um, I'm excited about what's going on on the other side of the canal. That's, that's my focus because we, that's the, the, the D section of the, of the project. And I would echo my neighbor's comment that I passed by the Rose Garden parking lot, or the Rose Garden Desert, you may wanna call it, there's, the, people don't use it all that often. It was more exciting when we had the food trucks coming in on Saturdays. But that's about the only use that it's had. So we're not gonna miss the, the Rose Garden that was paved over many, many years ago. I've never known it as a Rose Garden. So we're excited about the project. We are asking your support of the project and please support it, move it on and so that we can get this project going. We're excited and, uh, and thrilled about it and, uh, and can't wait for it to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vivian. Next speaker is Carly Vivian, and after that, we'll have Dana Feschietto Senagore. I probably messed that up and I apologize.
Uh, Carly Vivian, six nine five three East Lafayette Boulevard. Um, following my husband with the same address. Um, I am extremely excited about this project. We have been, as, as Chuck said, we've been residents at Scottsdale now for over fifteen years. Um, seven of those years have been in the Old Town area. We love the area and we are so excited about what is being proposed and being developed there. It's an area where, when you walk around, you're proud to bring people to the front end of the canal. But then you cross Goldwater and then we back up to what is not so nice-looking. What Carter has proposed and the, the whole team, we're just really excited about what it's gonna bring to the community, uh, the possibility of what it's going to mean also for business, more people, more development, and it's just an exciting time for us. So we're very excited, we're proud to be there, we're proud to know Carter, and we hope that you will be very supportive of all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vivian. Uh, our next speaker is Dana Feschietto Senagore. Very good, thank you. I'm just proud I got through that twice, that name. Thank you. Um, next speaker is Cynthia Siegel. That wasn't that hard. Here's a support. Very good, thank you.
Bless you.
And our last speaker, um, that I have a card for unless I have any other cards, is Bob Pejman. No additional cards? Okay. Mr. Pejman, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners, Bob Pejman. You know, I just came in here not wanting to speak, but then I heard Commissioner Kush mention parking, and I said, I cannot miss this opportunity to speak. It's a beautiful project. I mean, it, it's amazing looking, right? But it doesn't have enough parking and, you know, if you speak to the applicant, he will tell you it's the code. The problem is the code. But nevertheless, it's the problem, right? So staff was asked about parking on residential and they didn't really have an answer on, on the breakdown of the one-bedroom and two-bedrooms. Let me put this over here, if, if I can bring it up on the screen. I took a hypothetical case, plus or minus fifty-six, five-hundred-and-sixty units. Let's break it in half. Let's assume one bedrooms are half and two bedrooms are the other half, so let's say you have two-hundred-and-eighty one bedrooms, two-hundred-and-eighty two bedrooms. The code right now, one space for a one-bedroom, two for a two-bedroom, eight-forty total, that's the code. No guest parking, by the way. Here's a reasonable code that a lot of other cities follow. One bedroom, one and a half spaces makes the one-bedroom, the parking count, four-twenty. Two-bedroom is okay, but most other cities' codes have four units, I'm sorry, they have one guest parking per four units. So if you build this into it, there's another hundred-and-forty units. Total, based on reasonable code versus our city's code, eleven-hundred-and-twenty. Minus eight-forty, there's a deficit of two-eighty. Now, it's the code, but here's my question to you. People have guests, especially if it's high-end luxury condos, where do they park? There's no answer to that. People in the one bedrooms are gonna have more than one car, usually. Where's the answer to that? And where are they gonna park, all these people? Where are they gonna park? The street, they're gonna cannibalize the spaces, and the poor merchants will get their spaces taken away from them, twenty-four-seven. And don't forget the Rose Garden, by the way. I know that those merchants are freaking out that that's gonna be removed. I know that for a fact. The project is fantastic, but something's gotta be worked out. And this is a common theme with every new development that's coming to town because our code is bad. And the code has to be improved. It's applied under this code, I know, but you've still got a problem. Otherwise, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejman. No additional cards? So then we'll go ahead and close public testimony, and we'll hear from the applicant again.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair Members of the Commission. Thanks to all the members of the public who came out to speak, we really appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to suggest that this is, nothing about this project has been quick. Um, I just wanted to suggest that this is, nothing about this project has been quick. It's been 25 years of hard work by the Unger family, and I think that is reflected today in really two things. One, you see that we didn't bring this forward until we had agreement with staff. So we spent the 25 years, you spent the 25 years doing that, and we're in agreement with staff. And secondly, the public. I mean, it's really a fantastic thing that Carter's worked so hard and his family have worked so hard with those directly affected, and they're here all in favor. So 25 years, and I'd say with one disagreement on a stipulation and an assemblage of a master plan, that's really going to create something wonderful. I would like to ask Don Cartier, the traffic engineer, and Carter to come up just to talk about that parking question, because I think if that's appropriate, because you've addressed it before. Thank you.
Thank you again for having me up, and I will talk fast so the smarter people than myself can talk. And Bob Pejman, wherever you're sitting, is a great man. He's been working very hard for this city, and I appreciate that. Just for, into the record, Site D, the residential condo site, we do have 22 residential guest stalls there, and as well as 27 residential guest stalls on Site C. And part of the whole mixed-use nature of trying to crack the nut of how to solve a great problem to have. Scottsdale is an amazing place to be. They've done an amazing job with property values, and land is expensive. So how can we assemble an amount of land that costs so much, but do it in a tactful way that the residents care about, like putting it all underground, which to a significantly higher cost of money, but still achieve functionality? Well, we looked at, let's do office, Class A office, the greatest thing that's needed according to economic development and to all of the bigger people than me, and then let's use some of that nights and weekends. I wish I had more guests visiting me on Wednesday at 3:00 in the afternoon, but I unfortunately still have to keep working. So we have 400 stalls dedicated to the office that can be available public nights and weekends for guests, for bumping up retail in the area who need it, for working with great events like Canal Convergence that I'm part of and love and am helping to make grow. And we're doing all that. We want tourism to thrive. We want events to happen. And I'll let the technical person come in and talk more.
Don Cartier with CivTech, and quite honestly, after that, I don't have very much to say. That's exactly what I was going to get up and talk about. We looked at each area separately, so each of these areas self-park, and each one of these has a mixed-use component. So if you look at Rose Garden, that area D, that's the space that we're talking about keeping the low character, more residential character. It's got that smaller 3,000-square-foot retail component. That is the smallest mixed-use component of all of them, and at that site, we're still providing 59 excess parking spaces beyond code, which will be available for guests. And that number in and of itself exceeds what you would require for guests almost anywhere else. Parking is philosophical, and there has been a philosophical decision by the City of Scottsdale to create a downtown code. So it is a code that doesn't require the same amount of parking as you would be required in a suburban area of Scottsdale. But the reason that it does exist is because this area, the Old Town area, has such a mixed-use nature that if we considered each of these parking requirements on top of each other, we would have a lot of empty stalls. You know, late at night, everything would be empty. Or during the office, you know, time of the day and the residents' leave, those would just be empty. And it really makes a better use of the city's infrastructure and the city's investment. But Carter, you answered the question, so.
Very good. Anything else from the applicant? Very good. I'm sorry, Mr. Unger?
Quickly, again, because I do appreciate how long everybody's been here, just to address a few other issues that were potentially brought up and things we want to continue to work with, because the critiques are what make a project better. We are not taking away any event space along the canal. The only encroachments into public space that we would have would be shade canopies, just like all of the downtown area. I think some plans that were showed are potentially a little bit confused. And up until not too long ago, I myself was a firefighter and went up on that stick many, many times, and just as the fire department we've met with will verify this, it's definitely all life, safety, code-appropriate. I promise you that. And in regards to the improvement district, and I'm not supposed to bring up things that aren't being brought up, but I like to address everything, sometimes to a fault. And we wanted to allow the city to have every possible tool in their tool belt so that they could add to this project, so they could do more community good that they wanted to see above and beyond. So we have that in. We may not use it. We're currently negotiating with the city. And if there's certain aspects they want to see done, that we can use that as an offset and build it for them, we're here to do that. If the city doesn't want to see that, then that's perfectly fine, too. And in regards to the loss of spaces at the Rose Garden, we are more than happy to replace more public parking if the city wants to participate. So I'll take any questions you all have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions by the Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, the parking questions. Remind me, I know it was your dad and you weren't maybe as active as you are now, but the South Bridge project, the original one, there's public parking in that, correct, underneath Rose Law Firm and in that part? How did that, maybe someone from staff, I know some people have been around that long, how did that work out? How do we have public parking underneath South Bridge One?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Serena, that was a partnership where we got 220 spaces, public spaces underneath the existing South Bridge One. We also got some public spaces underneath the waterfront condos, and also public spaces in the Nordstrom parking garage.
When you say we got them, I mean, I know Fred's great for the city. I'd be still hard-pressed to think he just, out of the kindness of his heart, built 300 stalls for the city underneath this project and handed them over.
He was a very nice man, but not so nice as to give that kind of...
So there was some sort of negotiation of some value back and forth, correct?
Yes. The city paid for those 220 spaces.
Okay. So we're selling Rose Garden. I guess the question is, we're talking about parking, and you have downtown merchants that are worried about parking. It becomes a constant issue. What's been the conversation? I guess the question would be, you seem to be willing to work with everybody, would you be willing to work with the city to put public spaces underneath your project somewhere over your four different sites?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Serena, thank you for the question. Absolutely. We'd love to work with the city on any aspect that they would like to see more of, and that certainly includes parking, and we're happy to build whatever amount of parking that is in need and offers on the table.
Yeah, and obviously, we're not going to decide that. That's not going to make or break. But I think before this thing moves to council, given the public outcry for parking in the downtown, I think there needs to be a conversation. I mean, he's already going to have, I don't do construction, but I'm assuming it's going to be a lot cheaper for the city to build public parking spots underground, rolled into a project that's already being developed, similar to they probably did on the original South Bridge project. So just a thought, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to get a pretty high price to the city for the Rose Garden project. Probably be a good use of funds, but that's for someone else.
And Chair and Commissioner, just so you know, I think the manager's been talking about various options and if that's needed or not needed. So we'll certainly continue that conversation in any direction that the city management and council wants to take that. Thank you.
Question. Commissioner Kush.
First off, Mr. Unger, young Mr. Unger, you should be applauded. You should give a seminar to the owners of the Caesars Museum Square and the Marquee on how to gather the support of a neighborhood. You've done an amazing job. I got to tell you, I'm just blown away. You've got diverse groups of people that have oftentimes come up here and opposed things, and they've come up and has supported you. So my hat off to you on that. My only comment is on parking, because it's a hot button for me. And I think something to think about, because I know you really care about everything. It's one of your strong suits. I'm one of the few people who lived, I live in Old Town. I lived at Safari. I now live in Optima. In Optima, you go in the mailroom, and there's signs all over, "Spots for sale, $30,000, $40,000", and people are buying them, because if you think you can sell a one-bedroom condo and people only want one car, you're wrong, because what's going to happen? And even if they buy it, they're never going to be able to sell it. There are four units at Safari that have been on the market for over a year, $700,000. No one will touch them, because they only have one parking space. The truth is, a couple that's going to afford a $700,000 unit have two cars. And so I think you really, just please think about that, because I think that is a mistake. And that's a mistake that'll haunt that project in the future. My wife is a community manager for Safari. She's a community manager right now up at Kirland, as you know, and the biggest problem they have up there is inadequate owner parking. They're always arguing. Somebody's parking somebody's spaces, there's fights, there's towing. It's just a real nightmare, because the developer didn't provide enough parking. I know it's an expensive thing, but if you really wanted to do a service to the future of that project, consider the parking. But I support the project, and you've done an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kush. Any other comments or questions for the applicant, by any of the Commissioners? Commissioner Bolinger?
Really fast. I had asked a question earlier about a give and take, and I'm impressed through the presentation. I think there's more give than there's take, so I'll support the project.
Very good. I'm sorry, Commissioner Faqih.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions, actually, for applicant, and I would like to echo Commissioner Kush, actually. You guys have done an amazing job to see all the support, the email we've been receiving for the last two weeks. It's just amazing. And even when I met with you before, I mean, this is an awesome project. This is going to be, bring a lot of synergy to the area to it. This been said, I have a couple of questions. One of them could be kind of like concern, going back to what we've been discussing about Building C before. But I will start with my question to staff, actually. So I would like to learn a little bit about the infrastructure. I need those stipulations. I don't understand really well. Now, from what I know, we do have problems with the sewer, the water. I mean, there is a lot of capacity challenges going on in Old Town right now. And the same through, I'm assuming the roadway system will be fine. But where are we at? How does this project affect those existing infrastructure? What's the plan, I guess?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Faqih, the project is required to upsize infrastructure to handle the impacts of the development. As of right now, we're not, we don't have quite enough information about what exactly is going to be required in order to meet that threshold. So what we're working with the applicant on is a provision in the development agreement that will define how that's going to be identified and at what time the upsizing is going to have to occur. But on a project this large, that's very important when we want to make sure that everyone downtown is served.
And usually, in any rezoning case, we see the infrastructure plan come with it, to understand, I mean, how viable is the project, right? I mean, you have all this density. Does staff, at least, do we have initial study that the infrastructure will be able provided, especially for sewer and what's going on in Old Town, and some line are not even public? So I don't know how far you guys took it, so.
That's a great point. And one of the challenges is how do we get enough information at an early phase in order to understand exactly what's going to happen, and yet give enough flexibility to the applicant and to the community to make changes in what's being proposed? So I think we're at an appropriate balance between knowing what we are going to need to require and them knowing that they're going to be able to provide it.
Okay. Going back to the same question about infrastructure, when you have this Old Town ordinance and with this major change to it right now, how does this affect the whole city general plan? So I mean, the general plan coming up here, and there is a lot of revision happening for the density, right? Does the staff look at overall what's going on in Old Town, you know, like the new residential unit, everything we see, and for every project that's been involved so far and approved, right? How does this fit in the overall plans that staff see for Old Town?
Well, this project does meet the land use expectations of the downtown plan. And again, we did an update to the downtown plan to introduce Type 3 about a year ago, year and a half ago, in order to stimulate some revitalization. This is a good example of what that is. So it is a bit of a challenge to figure out when you're being too successful and when you're getting so much revitalization that it challenges the limits of the infrastructure. But it's something that we take very seriously, and we do hold developers and applicants responsible for providing the infrastructure for their own development.
Okay. Another question I have, and, you know, I was at DRB at the time when Waterfront come in, and we were talking about DRB, and I brought up the point of we should improve the canal. And the applicant said, "No, we shouldn't do improve the canal. We don't have money for it." Long story short, they end up improving the canal, and it was the best thing that happened to the project. And I think it ended up, I don't know what happened, development agreement, whatnot, but there was some number that took place. What's the plan, especially for Parcel D, I guess? Because the canal is really tired. I mean, it's really good at the intersection, and there is not much going on in Parcel D. Is there a plan to improve the SRP canal? Or, I mean, not the canal, the frontage of it, so.
Commissioner Faqih, thank you very much for that question. And yes, we are absolutely fully improving the canal on the southern bank next to Parcel D, as well as we are going to landscape and improve the northern bank as well. That's adjacent to our wonderful friends at Viadea Stay. So that way, we can enhance the whole canal area for everybody, so everybody wins. The more we create, the better experience. It lifts everybody up. And to Commissioner Kush's point, thank you for the compliment about community outreach, but it's not really me. I just have great neighbors, and they're the ones who deserve the credit, I assure you.
So going back to the canal, as far as the public art, what's the expectation of public art on the project? So where are you guys at when it comes to public art and for the surrounding?
So we are always toying around with ideas in the creative process and thinking about great locations for public art, certainly along the canal. As we mentioned, but really didn't touch on more, we're taking out 3,000 square feet of land on the east side of Site C, so we can create a pocket park there to relocate the Bob Park Source Found, so it can be used and enjoyed by the public like it deserves as our best piece of art in the Scottsdale Public Art Connection. We have that open 3,000 or 4,000-square-feet plaza space to the north of the market, where would also be a great location for public art, as well as, and one of the reasons why we have some amended standards on the stepbacks on Site A, is so we can create that open space in the center, which creates a great 16,000-plus-square-foot usable space by the public and events, and would be also a great location for art. I would say I would be lying if I told you what pieces were going to be coming and what exactly, but we've certainly identified great places to do that, to also increase wayfinding and pedestrian traffic to help pull people down and create, you know, a pathway to pull people.
Okay. And the other item, too, you know, when looking into it, going back to what we've been discussing before on the canal. And again, I think, you know, like, the way I see it, this whole canal has perspective for every project around it to be continued, and I think it's proven that people like the water. People could come in, and this could be a gathering place. And this started with Waterfront and could change to other places, right? And I come in, I'm having a really hard time with Building C. Again, you've done awesome with the project, and I don't know about if we lose, you know, like 50 residents, if this project is not the best project still. I think it could still be the best project. I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about the massing that's going to be that close to the bank. I see it, maybe, you know, I'm over exaggerating, but I see it really massive, when you have 150 feet that close sidewalk, which is unique, because you don't have this along the whole canal. I mean, I know the architect showed pictures from Chicago and whatnot, but this is, I mean, this is different, because this is the only building that's happening along the canal, and everyone has a stepback from it. In Chicago, you have this along the whole frontage, in a way. So this is a major concern, where I'm hoping, I don't know how other Commissioner, but I could see staff point about keeping the stepback requirement from the bank, and I'm hoping this is something you guys find with it. And I think it could be better for the project, just because of what I'm envisioning as massing. Or maybe I'm fine with encroaching to Fifth Avenue, and I know staff don't like it, but just to keep this kind of like frontage more open, more pedestrian-friendly, because this is a continuous connection between the whole project, I mean, other than what you have on the street. So this is one of my main concern. I don't know how the other Commissioner, but I would recommend we keep the stipulations for staff. Again, I'm not trying to affect your project. I'm just trying to keep this project going. The other last question I have, actually, that's it. This is, I mean, I covered it all, so if, the biggest thing, if we can look at the massing of Building C, and I'm not sure if the applicant has an idea, but this is the only major concern I have, other than the infrastructure that I wish you luck in, but it's the best thing.
Commissioner Faqih, thank you for the question, or the statement, question mix. And I appreciate so much that you all care about creating the best experience possible. And you're right, in the long run, doing the things the right way is a far more beneficial thing, and I plan on being in Scottsdale for a very long time. That's part of why we split the massing, instead of it being 350 feet long... Instead of it being 350 feet long, my architect probably would have the exact number, we split it into two towers, so we could create edges and openings. With having to squish back to 90 feet, that's how wide we have to work with to go up. It really does become cost prohibitive to lose that amount of floors and not be able to achieve that. And it's not the popular thing to say, but the way we've designed everything to be the max of benefit, to create open space and all that, we do need to achieve a certain density to make it all pencil. And we want to continue to work to improve that. And any more things we can do, either from an aesthetic standpoint or from a physical standpoint, Michael Murco is one of the best architects ever, and we cannot wait to tackle that issue problem, whatever people want to call it. It's an exciting challenge to overcome and create the best two towers we can out of it.
And I do appreciate that, and I know for fact how much you care about the community. And I met with you a couple of times, and I know how much you take this project really to heart and how much you're trying. And this is why I will ask you the question. If you take this, the massing that staff put together, and you see this 150 feet along the sidewalk, do you really believe this will be an ultimate experience to the people surrounding, especially with what you have east of it, west of it, and what you're looking at just on your patio around it? Do you truly believe that this will be the best experience for people along the canal?
That massing, no. That would scare me.
But this is what's proposed, but it's a little bit more fancy balconies.
And I do think the way it was shown does not properly illustrate what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And that's why we want to address all those things and bring it to DRB and show that we can do it in a way that is in keeping with Scottsdale standards.
Again, from my side, I'm supporting the project. This is the major item. I will leave it to other commissioner how they feel about it, but I would truly recommend we look at this aspect of it, because we're going to be living with this for 10, 15, 20 years from now. And I'm just scared on how this building would look 150 feet next to the sidewalk. But either way, I will be supporting the project.
Mr. -- thank you.
Chair, and Commissioner, to address that, maybe if a motion was made to, if there's a will to approve with the exception of stipulation eight, but with a comment to, you know, try to work with staff on some architectural design that might be, you know, a little bit more or something that could be helpful without the step back, because it just makes it unbuildable. And you heard staff, I mean, they're very insistent, and the type one is insistent on that. We have to do what we're doing on Stetson, so you understand where we're at.
Definitely. And I trust staff. Obviously, staff share a little bit of the concern I have. I put it in different English, but you know, it's kind of like, which is more complicated. But I will leave staff, you know, to, I mean, to answer to this. I think you guys brought up the concern. I completely agree with you. I see it as a concern. How could the stipulation be done? Maybe give the applicant some lean way, at the same time, achieve a little bit better pedestrian connectivity along, I mean, Building C. So I don't know if you have any ideas other than pushing the step back, or?
We would be willing to, if you deleted the number eight and suggested that we work with you for the next, we've got a month and a half, so we can, and to come to council with something that, and of course, we still would have to come to DRB, but to come to council with something that would be innovative and acceptable. And we can, we've been able to get there on everything else, so I have a lot of faith in our conversations and the productivity of those.
Commissioner Bollinger, I think you had a comment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, just to give it some color and maybe ask a question. The optima on Camelback, the relationship to, and the architect probably knows the mix, the relationship from the street, public right of way to the vertical part of that building is pretty close. And nobody, you feel, you don't feel threatened, you drive by it, it's very, and with the canal being wider and softer and lots of things going on, and I appreciate Commissioner Faqih's comments, but the breaks in the building and what you've done to kind of soften the edges, it's, I've come past that from when I spoke earlier, so it's, I get it. So it's, you're already going down that road to give some of that back to the community that the staff's asking for a severe cutaway. And I just, the optima comes to mind, and I just want maybe a confirmation?
Yeah, there are a number of projects that are in the city, the optima, the Envy, the one that was approved the other night, that all have a pretty significant vertical face. All of those locations are in more urban conditions, much more against neighboring projects. As you mentioned, ours is against open space and natural space, and we just made the commitment to chew away at some pretty important areas that are on the urban interface along the street side to allow the amenity that we felt that the city had decided that was more important, to help financially make the project work by pushing that development to the canal side. What we found is, in terms of our work, and people tend to look at about 40 feet down architecturally, chewing away the top of the building at that height. I'm not sure what, if that has an overall benefit, what we found in kind of urban conditions, that's a tougher.
Well, and Mike, you're confirming what I'm thinking, is that the rest of the project, even the street side, there is some area left over that, to me, there's the trade, that's just a visual thing that the gentleman that spoke, and I can't, sorry, David, I can't think, Ortega, Mr. Ortega spoke, and he showed it, and I saw the gaps on the street side, and I'm thinking, well, you made my point, and there is a give and take, and plus the towers are smaller, and it, there is, it's not 350 feet long. Thank you.
Mr. Grant, did you have a comment? I thought I saw that you might wanted to speak.
No, I was just going to comment, the Camelback optima is about 120 feet, with the difference being that the driving experience is probably different than the walking experience or the biking experience. And so we just want to make sure we're comparing apples and apples.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if possible.
Couple more comments, if you don't mind.
I actually had one question earlier, and Commissioner Kush jumped in, so I'm just going to help you out. It was the infrastructure on Commissioner Faqih's stuff, and I had some questions around that. He's referring as an engineer, probably to more the infrastructure on water, things like that. As we're starting to think about big projects, we have another big project, I think, coming down at some point. This is a massive project in the downtown, and there'll be a lot more coming. Not only are we thinking about the short term and the great job Carter's done, but I think we need to think long term. So when we hear things about, let's say, public safety, for example, and public safety signed off on it, I understand, I'm sure the fire marshal said it's sprinkled properly, I have no doubt it's fire safe for people to get out of the building. But how does that relate to the new number, the addition of people living and working in the downtown? Are we, is public safety comparing those numbers? Like, are these reports public safety signing off on? Are they saying that two trucks at Station Two continues to be enough to support this amount of development? Is that what we mean when they say, or are there enough police officers on patrol? As I think about this, not this project specific, this doesn't hang me up here, but since we're on the topic, I wanted to ask the question, and probably a question for staff.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I hope this answers your question. We're working with them all the time on their needs, public safety, and so far, they've been very comfortable with anticipation of the increase of density and intensity in downtown, particularly when looking at the update to the Old Town Plan. So I think that as we continue to move forward, and particularly at the Development Review Board level, they'll be assuring that all of the public safety issues are addressed.
Okay, so maybe, just for future reference, as we talk about big projects, if we could have a study session, just talk about infrastructure as a whole, you talk about water for Commissioner Faqih, who's an engineer, probably more specific than mine, but then as it rolls into public safety and all the other amenities downtown, these projects are great, so maybe a study session, but to this project, I know it's getting really late, but, I mean, this is how I think development's supposed to be done. I'm going to echo and say a different way that everybody else has set up here. I think you have a developer that has worked with the neighbors in a way that I haven't seen, to the scale of the project, to have people from every different walk, from every different community group, to every interested party, show up and pound the table, to get emails, just that constant that we've received in support of the project, says something about the developer, says it can be done, says you can build great projects, great big projects in the downtown and find community support. And so it's not us versus them, it's not that you have to do things just to push people out and call them names if they don't support your project. Carter's done it, the Youngers have done, his team's done it, and it's something that should really be, I think, a case study in the city over how you drive a successful massive project in the downtown, and you walk away and everybody has community support behind it. So I want to applaud the team, I want to applaud the people that came out and support the project. I know that this has been a long time coming, so thank you, Carter, thank you to the team. I'll obviously be supporting the project, so this is great.
Thank you, Commissioner Serena. I do have one question of staff. Item number 10, you did make a recommendation for denial of case one, II, 2019, and I don't know that we expanded, it's a little late, I may have missed the whole conversation on that, hopefully not, but can you expand on that a little bit so we can understand that recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a little bit of a tricky thing in that the infill incentive district is something that is within the city that allows some flexibility in a lot of different aspects of what we do here, from development standards and all the way up to allowance for fee waivers. The fee waiver aspect of that infill incentive district is usually something that's left for the city council to determine. So we didn't place much emphasis on it this evening. However, as the infill incentive district is processed, application for infill incentive district application is processed, it still needs to be heard by Planning Commission for a recommendation to city council. So it's kind of one of those things where it's not something that the City, the Planning Commission has much purview on, but we still want to put it through the appropriate process so that it's heard and does not get tripped up in any procedural aspects as it moves towards city council.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't hear the, did I hear the applicant address that, or did you not address that?
Sorry, Chair and Vice Chair, I addressed it really quickly, but I think what we had, correct me if I'm wrong to staff, but we had agreed that, we can agree that we're in favor of you moving forward with that, or forwarding that with a recommendation to council to consider, and frankly, we're talking about how that's going to shape up before council. So I don't think, you're not opposed to a vote tonight in favor of that moving forward, and we would like to see that, so that it can move to council.
Mr. Grant?
How's that for confusing?
Mr. Grant?
Yes, and staff would agree with that.
Thank you.
So you had agreed that with a recommendation for approval on that item, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, and we would, prior to the council meeting, whether this ends up being a development agreement issue or a fee waiver or whatever, you know, we would modify the stipulation accordingly.
Okay, so even though it says recommendation for denial here, you're not uncomfortable with a recommendation for approval?
He said yes.
And Chair and Vice Chair, just, so their recommendation for denial was just about the fee waiver issue, and the fee waiver issue is only really a council issue, and so they're in favor of moving it forward and council. I don't mean to speak for them, so.
Chair Alissio, we would be in favor of making a recommendation in favor of the approval of the infill incentive district. It's just when we get to council, it's going to be determined how that plays out.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to clarify that, because I am going to make a recommendation based on a request that we vote on each one of these items individually, each one of these cases individually. So since we have some words here that are in conflict with what you said, I wanted to get some clarification on that, so. Any other comments before we ask for a motion at all?
So I just have a question, on step eight, which is going to be under which one?
The first action, please.
Which is what, seven? Is that, wait a minute, no, I'm sorry, that's nine?
Nine.
Just nine? Correct? So?
Chair and Commissioner, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I am, so I'm comfortable with step eight, at least being open for conversation over what they do with the property, adjusting it, working with staff to make it happen. I think it's reasonable, given the way we've been able to approve other projects similar. My personal belief is they have some wiggle room, if they're willing to move forward a little bit onto Fifth to give up some on the canal. I think, I don't have the answer, but I think they can find a solution. I just think by handcuffing them to step eight at this point, I think is going to maybe not provide some of that flexibility. And I think, again, given the team and the way he's been able to work with the community and the merchants and the way he's been able to work with staff, I'm comfortable doing that, knowing that they can come to a resolution that everybody in the community would.
So are you making a motion modifying stipulation eight?
So I would be happy, unless there's some other comment, I'm happy to make the motion.
Doesn't appear that we have any comment.
Awesome, so I'll make a motion to move recommendation to item number nine, that's the 22ZN, correct? 22ZN, 2018, South Bridge, per staff recommended conditions and stipulations, except to modify step eight to allow for?
Deletion.
A better solution? What legal, what should I? Deletion of step eight, and after determined the plan block development overlay criteria have been met, and after determined the proposed zone, district map amendment and abandonment are consistent and conform with the adopted general plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, hold on, Commissioner Kush, we have a motion. I see some conversation with legal over here, so I'd like to, before we get a second on your motion, I'd like to get a statement from legal, or from Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get to stipulation eight, just want to give the clarification that the stipulations being referenced are the revised stipulations that were provided to you right before the meeting, that had a couple modifications to those. Those, okay.
Correct, so.
And with stipulation number eight, I think there is a preference by the applicant to have that removed, and so some clarifying language provided to the motion. Perhaps another planning commissioner can offer something, if they have something in mind before staff chimes in.
I think Commissioner Serena actually did provide some language for the deletion of stipulation eight, but maybe a modification?
Some kind, yeah, modification that works both with the city and the developer. Again, I think we've talked about moving forward a little bit towards Fifth, if that means taking some back on the canal, maybe it stays the way it is, I don't know.
I think we want to be really clear on the motion, just so that council understands.
I think that's too vague, what you're saying.
We agree, Commissioner Kush. Trying to clarify that.
Chair and Commissioner, if it's appropriate, maybe you delete the stipulation, and then just as a comment in the discussion that was forwarded to council, that your expectation is that we will work with the staff to come to some potential resolution prior to council.
That's kind of where I thought we were at, actually.
But you don't need to stipulate that, that can just be the.
Yeah, we can just move, I'm fine stipulating removal of condition eight, make the note and vote on it.
Mr. Curtis, is that an acceptable motion? The way that we've worked?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I think it's very clear in the record that although the stipulation would be recommended to be deleted, in the meantime, before council, the expectation is that the applicant team work with staff to perhaps further refine their intent on that amended development standard, because that wasn't quite clear. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So we've got a motion, and Commissioner Kush, if you?
I second that motion.
Excellent, we've got a second from Commissioner Kush on item number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item number nine passes seven to zero. So then, let's move to item number 10. Do we have a motion on item number 10?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of one, Roman numeral two, 2019, South Bridge Two. For approval?
I second.
So, great, we've got, so you're actual, you're making a motion, make a recommendation to council for approval of case?
Correct.
Is that actual language?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second by Commissioner Higgs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Curtis, is that, you've got that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good, thanks. So now we have item number 11. Ask for a motion.
I'm going to make recommendation, agenda item number 11, 19AB, 2018, South Bridge Two abandonments for the city council, per staff recommended conditions, stipulations, and determine the planned block development overlay criteria have been met. After determined the proposed zoning, district map amendment, and abandonment are consistent and conform with the adopted general plan.
That was on 19AB, 2018?
On 19AB, 2018, South Bridge Two abandonments.
Very good.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Bollinger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Move for adjournment?
Mr. Curtis, do we have a whole bunch more to talk about?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'm so moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kush, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor?
Aye.